All right. Hey. That clock says six thirty. That clock says six thirty. I think we'll call it six thirty. You ready?
Yep, I am ready.
It is six thirty. We will call the June second Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Roll call. Brooks?
Here.
Chuck?
Present.
Brian?
Present.
Thomas?
Present.
Alyssa?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
We have four of them. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Don't move. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, approval of minutes of the May nineteenth twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Because you weren't here.
I was not.
Uh, I think the minutes should say who chaired the meeting. Doesn't seem to. Unless at least it.
Nope.
Otherwise, I would move to approve with that change, with that addition.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time for public comments. Anybody that would like to direct or address the commission may do so now. Unless you are on the agenda, of course. Hearing none. We will move on to the preliminary plans for East Redwood Boulevard and North Paskflower Trail. Um, is there anyone here to speak on that?
I'm here. I'm, uh, Jake Morris with DGR Engineering.
Okay. Come on up to the podium. Would be much appreciated.
And then you have to press a button. When a little, when a little red light comes on, there you go.
Perfect. And this room full of coyotes will, you know, look past the shirt.
I'd say there's gotta be at least one, doesn't there? A couple of them. So, yeah, we, we put together these preliminary plans, uh, proposing this development. I believe, um, you may be familiar with it. It, uh, had originally come through as a, um, conditional use permit for, for twin homes. Uh, the layout has not changed since that permit was applied for. Uh, we just have more, some more detail in it now. Um, some more dimensions, some stuff regarding the, the utilities, um, and pavement plan there. So, would certainly... Answer any questions any of you may have?
Does anybody have any questions about this preliminary plan? Anyone?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I guess my preference would be to, um... My preference would be to continue the same type of curb cuts on the corners as the rest of the street on Redwood.
As far as the, the, yup, the pedestrian sidewalk ramps?
Yes.
Sure. Yup.
Um, I, I don't like the curb cuts that go out off the corner, uh, the ramps. I know the city replaced a bunch of them on, uh...
Yup.
On, uh, Sioux Boulevard, um, especially on Main Thoroughfares where you got truck traffic, you know, kids on their bikes swerve out into traffic, so.
And you were referring to the picture on fourteen, correct?
Um...
Page fourteen shows it. Fifteen shows it.
Well, it's DGR's drawing sheet number nine.
Yeah, nine's gonna be your best view of it. They all do show it. Yeah, so what he stands, we have diagonal ramps, which is just the one ramp, kind of in the center of the radius.
Yup.
We can show perpendicular, which lines it up straight with the pedestrian traffic. Um, there would be two with per- with perpendicular, but considering there's nothing on the north side of Redwood to receive that pedestrian, it'll just be the one way going across the intersection road.
Uh, yes, 'cause we did replace a bunch of those.
Yeah.
Okay. Yup, that's not an issue at all.
Yeah, obviously, if it was a, you know, a four-way intersection, that'd be a different story, but, yeah.
Yup.
That was all I had, too.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? The city have any concerns that you know of?
I have not heard of any concern from the city standpoint.
Okay. I would assume that Tammy is okay with this. Have you guys talked to her yet?
I have. Yeah, she's seen all this, um, spoken briefly, um, not in a lot of detail, but, yeah, she has, she hasn't raised any concerns to me.
Okay.
I guess the, you know, utility side of things, there may be a little coordination with her, but, um, that can all be sorted out in the DEP stage as well, um, prior to issuing the, the approval of the construction plans, so.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns or anything about this? No? I do believe we have to approve these, correct?
I believe so.
Yes.
If not, we'll, we'll overkill it and do a motion anyway.
We'll overkill it.
I make the motion we approve with Brian's suggestion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the preliminary plans. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It'll be awesome. All right. Next up. Group home and family definition amendment, starting on page nineteen. Um, this one I don't know about. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is kind of what we discussed last time. No one formally said whether to schedule it for public hearings or not, so it's back just as a discussion item. What we filled in last time was the numbers in section two, three, and four being eight in R one, twelve in R two, and sixteen in R three. And we talked back and forth a couple of meetings ago how we wanted to deal with the NRC district, so it is back on the discussion for everyone's thoughts.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, I wasn't here last time either, so I, I missed out on some of the conversation, so, um, a couple of comments. I didn't see that R four was addressed, Patrick.
Yup.
Manufactured homes. I know in the current ordinance, it's, it's, uh, group homes are allowed in that district, so I don't know if we want to include that in this amendment.
We, we can do that if, yeah. Um, and how would you prefer to treat them? Would you prefer the R one number, since this is the manufactured home district and it seems limited to those?
Yeah, probably the R one, 'cause really in manufactured homes, it's, I mean, you're not gonna see twin homes or other things like that. I mean, you'll probably never see something like this in an R four, but...
Chances are, if there aren't manufactured home parks now, land in Brandon might be a bit too expensive, but...
Yeah, but... Couple other comments, um... So, just looking at the quantities that we have in each of the dis- or that, that we're allowing in each of the zoning districts, um, so R one, we're saying up to eight. R two, we're saying up to twelve, and then R three, we're saying up to sixteen. So, in R three right now, we allow multifamily up to thirty-six as a permitted use, and then over thirty-six by a conditional use. I guess I would like to see the group home number similar to that. Yeah. Just for conversation purposes.
Um...
I don't think we would wanna be more restrictive.
Except for, they're sort of dictated, you said, by federal law, correct?
So, federal law, basically, you cannot treat a group home worse than you would treat a living arrangement where unrelated people live. So... And, uh, there potentially are group homes that are not Medicaid-funded, but in South Dakota, Medicaid-funded, you can have up to eight residents. I believe the VOA, when they were here to talk, that theirs would have six, just as a reference point, and that, that, that that's the only one that could come in or the rules are written for them or anything. It's just, that was their input, but, um, I'm, it makes sense to kind of match the district. That was the point. Whether you'd actually get a group home of that size, I, I don't know the market beyond if there are private ones and what they do, but it, it makes sense to just be consistent.
Well, I'm thinking of things like school for the blind. You know, I think, uh, the one in Aberdeen was... I think we had, I think we had eighteen rooms that could hold two...
Okay.
Two residents in it, um, so that would be an application that would apply. Um, don't know if anything like that would ever go into Brandon, but like you said, I don't think we would want to be more restrictive than what we allow, so I guess I'd like to see it at least thirty-six and then anything over by conditional use.
Okay.
I don't know. Others, thoughts?
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I'm okay with that.
But that's, you know, we don't wanna be less than... What's wrong with the wording otherwise?
Right.
I wasn't aware of that, so it's probably...
I don't know. We discussed last time, we were saying that, that everybody came up with willing to hold that number if something was...
Okay. Any other discussion on the rest of this?
Do we, do we need to keep the last part that talks about group homes may be subject to additional state and federal requirements?
It's probably not required. It's more or less there to point people in that direction, should, but I'm guessing someone building a group home would be hopefully well aware of what the regulations are.
Yeah, I guess maybe what I'd rather see is in our group home definition to, and, and, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves here, 'cause that's the next, the next topic, but to add back in, we used to have supervised in that definition, but I'd like to see us put supervised and licensed as a requirement for a group home.
Okay, so we'd probably slip that language in before, in the first sentence, right before home. A dwelling used to provide a supervised and licensed home, community-based family environment.
Yes. You know, we...
I do not know, uh, well... Probably.
And what that, I guess what that license means, I don't know if we need to define that, whether it's a state or whether it's a federal license.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
If you could just give us your name, that'd be awesome.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mike Nadolsky from Lynn Jackson Schultz in Lebron. I'm here on behalf of Volunteers of America. I can't tell you what specific licensure they need. Uh, obviously, they have to comply with all the state regs, and I don't think that there's any federal licensure that they have to comply with. Not particularly smart on that, but, uh, anytime they do receive that funding, and I think Mally had talked about that before, uh, they have to be on all fours with whatever that requirement is, so... The necessity of requiring licensure, uh, in there, I can't tell you how accurate that is, 'cause I'm, I don't know that the state actually issues a license or certificate. We can certainly provide that to you if you're interested, and then I can have someone that's more, uh, intelligent on that topic, uh, give you an update on that.
You know, the only, the only reason I brought that up, the supervised and licensed, is it, it could help prevent anything down the road of somebody saying, "Well, hey, I wanna build, I wanna build this building, and I'm gonna house a couple buddies that are handicapped, but, you know, it's not, it's not technically a, a group home." You know, there's, there's ways to bend the rules always, so...
We can look into whether that licensing requirement exists. The hesitancy is you wouldn't wanna write, they have to be licensed if there's no one to license them.
'Cause I know the, the previous ordinance said, um, a copy of the license needs to be submitted.
Okay.
Or provided to the city. That was, that was part of our previous, um, we, part of the permitted or conditional use was that they submit a copy of the license.
Wasn't it twenty-four hour supervised? Wasn't like just supervised, it was longer hours?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I believe so.
I, I just think keeping that in there keeps it at a higher level than, than keeping that out. Here again, everybody finds ways to, to twist the ordinances, to get something through that.
They sure do.
That we didn't intend it to be.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, the, I think currently the group home definition is a supervised living or counseling arrangement in a family home context, providing for the twenty-four hour care of children or adults.
Is that our current ordinance?
It's how it reads, I believe, yes.
Yes, we're rewriting it, so...
Yup, I, I, I get that. Just saying what it read before.
Yup, and twenty-four hours, I think, should be included. If a license isn't required to do it, then I don't know why we would write a license, except for the fact that it just sort of covers us in case. Now, I can't see anybody building a group home unless they were going to get paid to run a group home, so, I mean, there really wouldn't be much benefit to building one unless you were going to get paid to do it, so, um, but, yeah, I, I mean, I would say a license and, what did you say? License and?
Supervised.
Supervised.
I will...
Twenty-four hour supervised.
I will do some research on whether there is a license, and if there's not, then where we go from there.
The button on the side there, Alyssa. There you go. Jump.
Uh, can you use the word certified instead of licensed and achieve the same?
Sure. We'll let Patrick do the language.
I will probably look to see if there is language and whether it used licensed or certified or registered or whatever they use. If there is one, then we'll use the language they use.
Okay.
There was also some discussion about the NRC district. Did we want to take a look at that generally, since a home is a permitted use in the NRC? And if the purpose of the NRC is truly to limit development prior to it becoming more urbanized as part of the city, is that a topic we want to discuss more in depth? What the purpose of the NRC is, whether we divide it into ag land versus floodplain land versus pre-development land versus however we wanna do it? Is it good how it is? I know there was some discussion that we didn't wanna all sorts of building happening in NRC land.
And you wanna have that conversation based on a group home, or you wanna just have that discussion based on the NRC designation?
The group home conversation kind of led to the discussion on what is the purpose of the NRC and is the current language meeting that purpose, or is it... Does it exist but kind of contradict its purpose?
Okay.
So, that might be a discussion for a, a later day, if you all are interested in having that discussion.
Uh, well, we can discuss.
I kinda like how you put that, a pre-existing condition. You know, so if the city absorbs a, a farm place or something like that, that was already there, um, I, I, that's fine, but I don't, I wouldn't like to see us set up or plan for an NRC and then all of a sudden we start putting houses in it and other, other things.
'Cause technically, NRC land, a single-family detached dwelling is a permitted use. They could come to Melissa and Paul and get a building permit, and you could end up with a house, or many houses.
That does seem like it would be a worthy discussion.
Okay.
Maybe not necessarily in relation to a group home, but just in general for NRC.
I know one thing that was mentioned was maybe going forward to maybe, um, require a conditional use permit for any kind of new structure that would be built. At least I think I remember that. So, then that would cover any kind of regular house.
It would be a, a way to limit development, but for it being reviewed by you all, so it just wouldn't happen.
Why don't, why don't we put that on the next meeting's agenda for the NRC discussion? Does anybody have anything else about group homes specifically?
Nope. I have one thing. So, wasn't, wasn't part of the reason for this, that if a single-family home is allowed in NRC, we could have the same issue where we're, um... Where we might have to consider handling, handling the group home in NRC, because we could have, we'd have a condition there where we'd be treating them worse than a regular family. Was that?
Correct. If you allow a single-family detached dwelling and the ordinance, the rewritten language allows no more than three unrelated people to live in there, you conceptually would have to treat the group home just as good.
Okay.
So, group home would probably be something that we have to add to the NRC as kind of what section one is, and we would, however we want to do that.
So, it sounds like
As it's currently written.
Y- you're gonna probably have to do a little rewriting on the group homes. We'll discuss that at our next P and Z.
Is there a number we wanna place on the NRC group home in the meantime? Probably similar to R one, if you can have a...
I, I would say.
That's fine.
And then we'll discuss the NRC jurisdiction and whatever the new language for the group home is at the next meeting?
Yup.
Does that sound good? All right. So, we will move on to item number nine, discussion on allowing septic tanks in R one low-density residential districts.
Tim, can we back up for one second?
Sure.
We did talk about, um, family definition?
Oh. I'm sorry.
Um, I mean, we, we kind of jumped forward and talked about group home definition.
Okay.
Turn my mic on. Um, on the family one, that second, term, they're a group of not more than three persons. Could we change that to three adults?
That would presumably then be any un, any unrelated people eighteen or below is fine, is with the three adults.
Here, here's what I can see is, you know, uh, an unmarried couple, they each have kids. You know, now you have four or more that are unrelated. They might be related to some of the people, but not to everyone.
Yup. You have a Brady Bunch situation.
Yeah, and, and unmarried Brady Bunch, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's when we were at the very beginning of the discussion, we talked about how zoning law hasn't really kept up with family law, and that's kind of one of those situations. So, I can draft the language up to it be no more than three adults. And whether I, if you all want a definition of adult, we can put it in there, but that seems to be a pretty solid understanding outside of zoning what an adult is, so, unless you really want a definition.
Well, Brandon, what you just said, uh, like a mixed family, kids are still living there and they're older than eighteen. Now you have more than three adults.
Keep them home.
That's true, yeah. They're, they, they might be related to some people within, but not, they're not all related, so...
Well, does it, is it good enough if they're related to at least one person and then all four, or? I don't know.
In a practical context, absent, look, I could see where a college town would be quite keen on enforcing unrelated people living together, but I can't imagine Paul, like practically, has the enforcement time to count the number of people that go into the house and find out if they're living there or not, and...
Yeah. Well, and that brings up another subject of, you know, what if somebody rents a house and they have roommates, you know?
Yeah.
Or an apartment, or, I mean, I'd be guilty of this when I was in, like you said, the college town thing. Yeah.
The one way to get around it at all is not to define family at all. It's just we, you regulate by the dwelling being a, a cohabitation regardless of the amount of people. But then you could get into thirty people living in a, I, and I don't know what building code to have to say about that, but thirty people living in a four-bedroom house.
Once the structure's built, building code probably doesn't do much.
Right. Other than we, we might have some terminology that talks about single-family dwelling or something like that, that we may have to clean out of our ordinance.
Yup.
If there's locations where we talk about family.
So, by two minutes, are we getting rid of that? No, we had the two definition. When we had the U S, one was family
Correct.
within the group home, so we're getting rid of that part to clean it up. So, we're just going by the group home definition instead of the family definition.
Yes.
Yes, we are changing the family definition in some way. It's whether we use all this language or not, right?
Does anybody else have anything else on this? Sounds like we're not done with it just yet.
I guess we have a couple of city council members here. What is, what is your guys' perspective on, do we want to limit that? Do we want to limit the number of unrelated people? At this point, it may change down the road as we get bigger, but at this...
Like, like Alyssa said, there's a lot of kids in people's basements.
Yeah.
And they may be related to just one of the... Here, I, I don't like it.
There could be three generations of the family in the same house, too.
But that's, but they're related, you know?
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah.
See, if it becomes an issue, like if neighbors start coming to the city and saying, "There's ten people going out of this house that are above the age, you know, and twenty-five years old,"
Yeah.
This, I mean, form of discussion, then just look into it, but...
Yeah, 'cause we, we kind of went to extents to define a group home and what we allow a bunch of unrelated people to be able to live together, and now we're saying, "Well, it's not an issue," so...
Conceptually, if the unrelated thing was written out of the definition of family and it was just people living together in a dwelling unit, I, seemingly that would encompass a, a group home in this context as well. I think.
So, do, do we have in our ordinance written how many people are allowed to live in a house?
We do not.
We have no rule?
There is no cap on people related by blood, marriage, adoption, court order, or legal guardianship, including foster children.
So, there's, I mean, is there, is there a fire code that, that supersedes how many people can live in a dwelling? Does it, I mean, is there any stipulation at all?
And Brian, what I heard from the audience was not so much the number of people, but more so discrimination, unfortunately, against the handicapped person. If that's what I heard.
Yes.
I did not hear enough of that.
And, but, but numbers to the point where if you buy a house, say I buy a house, and I say, "Hey, I got eight buddies that don't mind sleeping on couches and whatever," they'll pay, like, do, I don't, we don't have any rules against numbers?
So long as they're related, say, you, like, you, you know, you and your, you know, eight brothers could have a house conceptually and just live there together.
Is that a zoning issue, or is that something else when it comes to enforcing something like that? 'Cause I imagine what would probably happen is there'd be a lot of vehicles parked on the street, and then somewhere along the line, there would be, but the, the city has nothing to, um, enforce in terms of that.
I'm just trying to figure why we, why we have this definition in there.
Of family?
Yeah.
No idea.
Is it because we talk about single-family at...
I don't know. That'd be another good thing, I guess, for you to research, Patrick, is why do we have a definition of family at all?
But then, if we don't, then the group home thing goes away. And it, and isn't an issue. And then, do we limit the number of people?
But we had a definition for family when they came and applied for it.
Right.
That's why we're redoing all of this.
I'm just, so why wouldn't they have been, what I'm saying is, why wouldn't a group home have been allowed before? 'Cause obviously, we had something in our ordinance that said they could not be in there by limiting in some fashion.
I hope you're taking good notes, Patrick. Sounds like we have more... Sounds like we have more discussion to do.
Yep.
Patrick, do you, are you familiar with the Fair Housing Act in college?
That is one of the places where the ADA and the Fair Housing Act are one of the many things that this is, this language is based on.
And they talk about family?
I don't believe that has a definition of family in it. Very few places have a definition. It is legally risky to define family, just because everyone's interpretation of what their families are different. You know, somebody goes to school and has, you know, eight best friends and they consider them family, so.
So we'd have to take an action to get rid of that. So, yeah, maybe, what's the, what's the impact if we strike our definition of family instead of amending it and changing it to this? That'd be the question.
I imagine we would regulate what a, I was, we'd probably have to come up with some different term than single-family detached dwelling. But do we just define dwellings by dwelling units being a contained facility with a living space, a bathroom, and a cooking facility?
We could leave the, under family, could leave the number one, one or more persons, although I've changed it to two or more persons because one or more persons related to himself by blood, related marriage, but anyway. And then just take away the number two, one, just have one thing, one item under family instead of two items. Then we still have a definition of family.
If you take away number two, number one does not account for unrelated people. So that would conceptually mean no unrelated people could live together by taking away number two.
I don't know, maybe, maybe we're overthinking this. Maybe we just leave it as, as three adults as it is now until somebody comes in and has an issue with it.
I think that might be the ticket.
I think we had, we had an issue with the, but it wasn't because of the number of people, it was because they had garbage all over the place with that one house. They had multiple.
And yes, we have ordinances that dictate things like that.
And parking on the street.
But, but you can park on the street, everybody can park on the street.
But just garbage.
Yeah.
I would say let's leave the definitions alone until an issue arises.
Right, okay. You good?
Yep.
Now, now, now are we on to number nine?
Yep.
Yep, sorry about that, Tim.
Not a problem, all right. Now, item number nine, the discussion on septic tanks in R1 low-density residential districts as conditional use or under specified criteria. Would you like me to do this one?
Yep, you are the knowledgeable one on the next two, so I will leave you to it.
So it, I was having a thought that we have lots of areas outside of the Brandon city limits that would be very difficult to sewer. We can get water to them, we could annex them into the city, we could collect property tax, we could collect sales tax if they build houses. But it's really hard for us to get sewer to most of them. And most of this is along the river, up and down the hillsides. So would we be willing, or at least willing to discuss what it would look like to include a septic tank in, into these types of neighborhoods? Because to be honest, most of them, they're large plots, they will continue to be large plots of land. I mean, we do allow a holding tank currently, so a development could be done with a holding tank. A holding tank does require, you know, frequent emptying, depending, of course, on the size of the tank and whatnot. But it was just a discussion that I wanted to bring up, so here we go. What are your thoughts?
Well, last week we approved a holding tank for Tussit's.
Houston's.
Houston's.
Yep.
Okay, well, it's a new building.
Yep.
I saw the problem with that one.
Well, no, there's a difference between a holding tank and a septic tank.
Oh.
So holding...
A septic tank goes into, or a septic goes into sewer?
Nope, nope, a septic tank is designed to hold solids and leach field off the liquids, if I remember correctly. Yes, there's a, there's a drain field, if you will. There are a little more, there's a lot more going on in a septic tank than just a holding tank. I by no means would want these in every neighborhood that gets built, a traditional, let's say, neighborhood. But then again, we'd be running our sewer into a traditional neighborhood. Yeah.
I could see us putting like a size limit to it, like the, like an acre. Has to be an acre or more to allow it, something like that, I would say. Because that's what it is, I think, in the country, I believe. It's gotta be at least an acre, I think, to have it.
Okay.
Are you thinking, so we could allow them in the city, but we can't get sewer to them?
So if you go along the river between Sioux Falls, say, and Brandon, there are a lot of, there are already existing country subdivisions that theoretically we could annex into the city. But getting sewer to them is gonna be incredibly expensive. Because it's either gotta go under the river or through a state park or, right? We also sort of ran into the same thing with the land that we looked to annex last year. I mean, sewer would have been the hardest thing with most of those properties just because of the amount of lift stations it would have taken to, you know, get things out of those neighborhoods. So that's where this thought came from, I guess. Because we would like to accept some land into the city of Brandon, but if it becomes impossible to price it out, like if you can't get sewer to them, then it won't ever be part of it.
I sure don't have an issue. Sure don't have an issue allowing them in certain circumstances like you and Rob described, you know, it's like an acre or more.
Right.
I wouldn't have an issue with it.
So I, I think, right now, if people do, if people are inside the city limits and they do have a septic tank and it wears out.
Correct.
They're not allowed to replace it.
Correct.
So if this new thing came about, would they then be able, so I'm thinking about all the people on Highway 11 there.
Yep.
The, whose backyard's back up to Aspen Park, they all have septic tanks.
And that was certainly...
Then we would have to change that part of that other, we'd have to change a part of, yeah.
But they would have to meet a qualification, so, right, if it's an acre like they said, then they would have to still meet some qualification to be allowed to do it.
So, so my only point being, because I'm thinking this would affect only new construction, would affect properties that are already there.
Both.
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially both.
Yeah.
Mostly because of the landscapes that exist around the city of Brandon are challenging to sewer efficiently, let's put it that way.
My concern with this, Tim, so right now, most of the land outside of Brandon, it's hard to get a residential building permit because of the, the county requires, you know, one, one house per forty acres. So most of those forty-acre areas are gone, already spoken for.
Yep.
You know, per, per section. What scares me about this is it opens up the floodgates for developers to go in, develop that property on the edge of town and not put in sewer. And so then what happens when you get a development of forty, fifty, sixty, eighty, a hundred houses and there's no utilities put in the right of ways for that upfront?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something to...
And then when that has to go in down the road, those residents are gonna be flooding you guys when they get assessed the cost of tearing up roads, putting in, putting in sanitary, making the connections.
Well, I think one of the enticements to, for developers to wanna come in the city limits is because they want the water and sewer, right?
Most of them want water, for sure, and they want paved roads and they want snowplows and police protection and all the things the city offers.
I don't think if you do this, I don't think there's gonna be overwhelming grounds for them to be annexed in if we said, oh, you don't have to hook up to our sewer.
I, I believe there would be, there would, there would be a select number of landowners that would be very interested, let's put it that way. Yeah. I, well, so again, one of the things that held us up when we looked last year at this was people hooking up to our sewer. Because some of those properties to get from their property to, let's say, Redwood, it's gonna be an incredible expense. Any other thoughts? Or would you like to think about it longer and we'll, we'll readdress it? Or would you like Patrick to write something and just see what kind of limitations he comes up with?
Better than writing something, could you reach out to some other communities to see if they've ever done something like this?
So based on my past experience, the communities that do this are generally, the smaller communities allow for this just because they have very limited budgets for utilities. What they do typically is if they do bring them in the city limits, it's one of those things where if, when we get those utilities to you, then you have to connect to them. And how we balance that with the, the life of the system, is it that, or when your system dies? Or there, there are different ways they, they do it. It, the cost thing might, is it on them or is it all on the city? The city just building out and they pay the, and that's just, or are they paying for it to get out to them? Or is the city just doing that as an expansion? However, all that goes, that is for more of a council decision than a me decision about who the cost goes with. I know at the, one of the developer meetings, Tammy, Paul, Melissa, and I met with Mr. Schelling was talking about something similar. They, they're looking at a property and water and accessing sewer is kind of also their issue for the development.
We...
And how the cost would come up should that eventually be brought into town.
Our, our, sewer is very expensive on some of the terrain around the city of Brandon. Let's just put it that way. Water seems to be easier to get people, get to people and for them to access. But I know that there's a lot of land and for us to build the infrastructure, when we look at our CIP list, we don't have a lot of money to build sewer infrastructure to some of these places anyway right now.
Well, what, what happens if one of those homes on Highway 11, like you mentioned, Alyssa, the septic system goes down? And we say, you can't redo your septic system, you have to hook up, but we can't get there.
Yep.
What are we gonna do?
Well, because we don't, I don't think we have, we don't have sewer along Highway 11 for people to hook up to now, I don't believe. Tammy would, and Brian would better be able to answer that, but their closest access point right now would probably be Twin Rivers, maybe? Which means they'd have to take it all the way through the park.
Maybe you have to, we should have something like this because, because that's gonna happen at some point.
Now, you know, the benefit to the city for annexing properties into it is we get their property tax. If they become water customers, then we, they become water customers. And I get that when we build a neighborhood, per se, a traditional neighborhood, we would require them all to use city water and sewer. But there's just a lot of examples, it seems like, of land skirting the city right now that could be annexed into the city, but we can't provide them this service.
I think there's a place for it and with some limits like were mentioned earlier. I mean, I don't wanna have something like that to, yeah, keep from opening the floodgates. But I think there's a place for it if it's done right.
Well, and to be honest, I mean, if you're gonna build a house in a neighborhood, it's probably cheaper to hook up to city sewer than it is to put in your own septic system anyway and maintain it. I would think, I've never priced out a septic tank, but... But in a situation like this, if it's literally gonna cost you, well, I know what it costs the city to run sewer lines, so I can't imagine what it would cost an individual to run them.
What about your developers, though?
What about them?
So if they come in, they request to be annexed so that they get, they get the other benefits, but they don't put, but they don't put the sewer in?
Yep.
Then what happens? I, I can see this getting out of control.
No, we will have limitations. Like you can limit who, who this is available for, right? If you put a size limitation on, on a parcel, if they go to subdivided, then they no longer qualify for septic.
Just to clarify earlier, so I mentioned the one example, but I, there have been at least three cases where a developer has talked about getting around the limits of the topography in terms of becoming part of the city. And a lot of cities have that issue, but here I've had at least probably three or four conversations about that issue. So it's, it has come up a little bit and how, or if it makes sense to do it as a question.
And the other thing is, the county seems to anyway have, thankfully to the cities, any urbanization or density, they wanna push into the city limits, whether it be Sioux Falls, whether it be Brandon, whether it be T-Hairsburg, whatever. They don't necessarily want subdivisions going in the county anymore. At least that would be my understanding, I might be wrong, but, so this is a way then for developers to then access some ability to develop property.
Well, we wouldn't let me come in with that out there by Sioux Valley if he does get a septic.
Now, we are building a sewer main to go out there that he can access and hook up to. That, that was a limitation thing, that wasn't really a topography thing. We, we didn't have the capacity to hook him up. But we will shortly, when we're done with it. We could have, absolutely.
So he's gonna count?
Correct, but we could have allowed him, if, if we changed this, to have, have annexed that into the city limits. Yes. Any other thoughts?
Like I said, I'm, I'm agreeable to doing it, but I agree with Brian. I think we have to start someplace with some limitations so we don't open up the floodgates.
Oh, I would agree.
I, I don't know if you can find those someplace, Patrick, like examples of what somebody else has done that we can steal or modify or...
Yep, we can look into it. One positive of annexation into the city would be the city's standards would control how they develop. I know out in the eastern part of Sioux Falls, more southeast, you have a lot of rural residential developments where the road is more or less not quite... the road is more or less not quite a dusty trail, but a little bit more than that. And that would save some expense for them ahead of time if they build things up to standards rather than having to... Whatever the cost would be to upgrade what they have in place. But we can certainly look into what makes sense, if it makes sense, what requirements need to be there for it to be practical and not just become a free-for-all that spirals out of control.
Oh, I agree. Like I said, I don't think a traditional neighborhood should be able to do this. You know?
But on the other hand, do we want non-traditional neighborhoods that then create issues as the city limits continues to grow?
But if they're in the... If they're encompassed in the city limits, when the development happens, like Patrick said, they'll have to build to the city's standards, with the exception of this one thing.
I don't have any problem with holding tanks in a lot that is big enough, say, an acre. But when you get into septic fields in the city, I don't see where we need those in the city. I think holding tanks, but not septic fields. There's not very many places in this city where they can get away with that. Unless there's a sewer provided, I think a holding tank is their primary answer. Unless you own, like, five acres or something.
Some of them do.
Well, fine. I'm just... I'm saying if they're gonna build a new house on it, they should have a... Come to the board and get it for rent.
Okay.
So, my question is, like, obviously, we're getting maxed out 'cause we can't get, grow any further because, well, we can grow. But the problem is getting there. And we don't have the means of it, money for that part of it, to a point.
So, Barb and I have, two weeks ago, sat through a CIP meeting talking about our infrastructure and what we can afford to do. Uh, capital improvement plan.
Which to me, then, and when we can't do it, it means, to me, it slows down the growth of the town. To me, it does, which hurts us. Right? I understand, like, we gotta make sure it's correctly written, so no one's gonna abuse it. That's how I look at it.
I'm kinda in my mind envisioning, I don't know what you call it out there, but off of Maple, and you go across the river, and then Oak Road, and up in there, that development, which is in the county, I'm positive. But I'm sure that's all septic and they have water. But that's the kinda thing I have in my head. Like, if it's... If there was a spot like that, that's hilly and not easy to develop otherwise, and there was a case for this where you could have some... Otherwise, the improvement over that is you wouldn't have gravel road. You'd probably have a better street system in there. And then, if the septic, I don't know what size lots out there. The ones I've noticed are pretty big. I know, they vary. But that's what I kinda have in my head. And I think that is something that could be good to allow some of that, something like that.
I... You must be referring to Country Gables there?
Whatever it is.
Just on the west side of the park?
It has a name. I didn't know it had a name.
Probably, I'm not sure.
Country Gables and then Indian Hills, yeah. But I look at, you know, I look at an area like east across Veterans Highway from the Dolly Farms Mall and Theater.
Yep.
You look at an area like that, and to go in after the fact and put in sewer?
Yep.
You know, if the developer goes in, they do it cheaper. They don't collect the money to do it later. Now, who's gonna pay to go in and put all of those properties onto a sewer system?
Well, right now, nobody, because...
No, I know, but I'm just... I'm looking at it as an example of what could happen.
So, they're not a part of the city limits of Sioux Falls?
I understand that. But at some point, they're gonna be.
They've fought for years.
I know. But they're only gonna be able to fight it so long. And then, when it happens, when they're encompassed, who's gonna pay for that? Is it the city? Is it the... You know, because the landowners should be paying for it. People that purchase a lot, that's part of the cost of their lot.
Would they fight annexation as hard if they were allowed to keep their septic tanks?
But do we? So, say this happens in Brandon. Do we then continue to let these people have septic tanks? So, we let fifty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, two hundred houses out there with septic tanks? And do we wanna pass that on to our great-grandchildren when they're sitting in these seats?
Okay.
Because everybody's gonna fight, "Well, I've been living here for forty years. Why do I have to pay to put in a..."
We heard it last year.
Yeah. No, I know. I'm just looking at what's gonna come down the road if we allow this to happen.
So, is there a greater benefit to having the people living in the city limits? Or having them be sewer customers?
How potentially, how dangerous or damaging could septic tanks be in large numbers?
I don't know.
It's our groundwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if a septic tank leaked today, when would it get into the groundwater?
Look at Lake Ponson.
Oh, I don't know there.
It's a perfect example. Every property around that lake had a septic system.
Okay.
And they had a mess on their hands. It was polluting the lake. It was causing all kinds of problems.
Okay.
What's that?
What did they do?
They set up some regulations and some other things in place. But I guess my point is, by doing this, we're just pushing, we're pushing the problem down the road. It's a problem that needs to be addressed. Are we just gonna push it off to the next generation?
Oh...
I understand that we need to grow and we need to, you know, we need to expand. But do we push it off on the next generation? I mean, that's why we don't have funds is because we're kinda cleaning up things that were handed to us, you know, many, many years ago. Maybe this is more of a city council issue than it is a P and Z?
Um, it starts here. But then, yes.
Yeah, and what does our comprehensive plan say about theories and question? And, I mean, aren't there places to expand the city without having this problem? I mean...
Sure.
Somebody wants to build a neighborhood by the river? Isn't there another place that could go that we could annex north or...
I mean, we could build Minneapolis.
Well, yeah. Well...
I mean...
I would feel a lot more informed about this if I could be pointing to places at a map while we talk. You know, if I knew more about what the county regulations are, then I would feel a lot more informed to be able to make an opinion.
The county allows septic systems.
Yeah.
The county also does no... I don't know when this happened, but the county does no longer allow subdivisions, I don't think. Because there's a housing allotment requirement.
Right, that's why they set up the one house per forty acres per section of land was to prevent this from happening, you know, from getting too dense.
Don't they cluster them? So, there's four then, like, in a cluster?
But they still qualify them.
Yeah.
And I know where Sioux Falls is certainly running into trouble with this is they have, oh, gosh, I heard a number the other day, how many developments that are currently either on the edge of or in the city limits of Sioux Falls that are not annexed into the city? And do you just grow around them and have little islands of county inside of your city limits? When it becomes cost prohibitive for them to be annexed? I mean, we ran into that a year ago. That when it becomes cost prohibitive for these neighborhoods to be annexed, then they just aren't. And the biggest cost for most of them is hooking up to a sewer system. So...
I think at a minimum, if a developer comes in, they need to put the infrastructure in, even if they don't have a place to connect to. I think that infrastructure needs to be in place, so that when the city does get sewer to that development...
Would you allow for a septic until the city brings a sewer system to at least minimize the expense, let's say? I mean, at least the upfront, just because, you know, if we grow west, we have to go under a river. If we go east, we have to go under a river. And sewer expansion is very expensive.
But at some point, we gotta do it.
Well, yeah. But in the meantime, will we allow growth to occur without it?
I think it needs more discussion.
Okay. I just introduced it, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate your comments, Brian, because I get, and I, you know, I think it's gonna be part of the discussion is how many... Because I'm thinking of a, you know, when I'm thinking of it, I'm thinking of a specialty use that's gonna be pretty limited, but maybe it wouldn't be as limited as I think. And you're right, how many septic systems would be safe around the city of Brandon? So, I think that's, those are good points and...
We already count a bunch of septic things around the city now.
Yeah.
Do you know how many we got now?
No clue. I've never counted.
When I think of it, I think of it as a specialty use that would be limited enough that it wouldn't happen in that many circumstances. And I would think of them as being designed for permanent use that way. Whether that's realistic, and we might find that out, but that's, you know...
You mean, like, lake homes only around the river?
Well, yeah.
For these...
You can't get real close to the river because the state owns most of the land to the river.
I'd be interested in knowing how many septic tanks we have inside the city limits now.
Oof. No idea.
I just know they do a lot of split rock. Highway 11 in there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where else.
Yeah. All the properties on Sioux that were developed in the...
On Sioux, yeah.
Yes.
On the east side of Sioux, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Well, I may... Do you want Patrick to write an example of what it could look like? And then, we'll discuss more at the next one? Patrick, do you wanna write something?
I could sure attempt to. If you find anything out there and you wanna send me some direction, feel free as well. So, we'll work through it. And if it works, it works. If it doesn't, then at least we talked about it and...
Yes. Like I said, we currently allow for holding tanks. It's just they're... They're a little more inconvenient, I guess.
I'm trying to think, like, Pine Lake Hills, is that, does it all be septic too?
Well, that's one of the neighborhoods that Sioux Falls is currently struggling with.
That's all septic.
Absolutely.
If you ever did get to as far as the neighborhood you mentioned, that's back behind the woods.
Yep. He just named it.
Country Gables and Hidden Valley.
I think eventually we'll get that part.
Well, with Highway 100 just being built, right? The growth between Brandon and Sioux Falls will be something. And it will be a little bit of a struggle. Yes. Okay. You can write something, and we'll discuss it more at our next meeting when everybody has a chance to think about it a little bit. All right. Item number ten. Discussion on allowing driveways, parking pads, and the side yard setbacks. Me again? I was having a thought the other day, because this seems to have come up a lot as well. So, what are your thoughts on, I get a structure being seven feet from the property line. The structure needs to be, because of fire code, structures need to be so far apart. And I also realize that for runoff, we like green spaces. That keeps more water off the streets. However, I don't know how many times in the last fifteen years somebody has had a parking pad or something less than seven feet and have had to come for a variance, have had to tear it out. And do we care? Should it be allowed? I don't think it should be allowed to the lot line. That is a little excessive, because we should have some green space. But is seven feet the number, or is it something less than that?
So, Tim, are you thinking that there's instances where this is happening now? That's why we need to address it?
Yeah. I mean, we just had a variance not too long ago because somebody had a sidewalk around their pool that was a few inches off, so...
But they could correct it.
Yeah, but do we...
I think it should look differently in the backyards, I think, for sure. Like, that instance, because that's not affecting anyone.
No.
For my, you know, and you can't park on it, because you can't park in the rear yard.
Correct.
And it's not gonna obstruct anyone's view, because it's on the ground. Because I could, you could build a deck that far out, as long as it was a foot off the ground, so...
Okay.
Maybe you're just talking about in the rear yard.
Just rear yard, I'm saying.
Yeah, I could live with something like that, but I don't want anything touched in the front. If they need to come in for a variance, they need to come in for a variance.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Are you saying people might park, build a parking pad in their rear yard?
No.
No.
Well, the only way they can access a parking pad in their rear yard is if they have a drive lane.
Drive-through on a... So, I don't know what you're saying about the...
I'm saying, like, that pool, for instance.
Right.
She was, whatever, a floor over.
I remember that, but that, would that...
No, I'm just saying, just setbacks with...
All setbacks.
Pouring pads or concrete in general.
Well, if you have your regular driveway seven feet away from your lot line, and then you want a parking pad big enough to put your boat or camper pickup on that, you're gonna have to have it at least seven, five, six, seven feet wide?
We don't have to concern ourselves with what they wanna use it for. We just wanna know, I just, the discussion was about...
Yeah. But I don't see how you could avoid, if you say, "Well, yeah, you can build a parking pad into the side yard, but not all the way to the property line." What good is it gonna do if you can only build two or three feet wide or...
People do it.
I mean, I could, if she talked to it three feet wide or four feet wide, for example, it could be a sidewalk on the side of the house to go into the backyard. Just as an example, I would say.
Okay.
I just know this is one of those things that has come up on more than one occasion. And knowing that, you know, we like to write ordinances so that fire codes are met, what does a driveway have to do with a fire code?
Drain, not that, but drainage.
Drainage, yep. That's why we like green space, for sure.
We talked one time, this was quite a while ago, about materials that you can drive on or park on that are permeable.
Yes.
I wish I knew more about that. What types of things are available for that use?
Well, it would've been things like pavers.
Pavers, yeah.
It would've been permeable pavement, which they also make.
Yeah. There, yeah. Tammy might know more about that. What...
Yes.
What materials? What materials exist? Cause we might be able to talk about stuff like that to solve our problem.
So, I guess, what are, what are your, what are you thinking, Tim?
For?
So, you want no, you wanna be able to put a parking pad right up to the property line?
No, not to the property line. There needs to be some separation, so I've always used the example of my house, I am seven feet off the property line, but for some reason, there was a brief window of time when my neighbor could pour theirs just a little bit closer. So, they're about maybe a foot or two off the property line. Now, theoretically, if we could go property line to property line, we could just match our driveways up and there'd be one giant sheet of concrete. That probably is not a great idea. There needs to be some green space separating, but as long as I've lived in the house, that's, that, that driveway has existed and it hasn't bothered me a bit.
But what if there's a camper parked on there?
Well, people are pa, parking campers in their driveways, unfortunately, we don't have laws against parking your camper in your driveway, or your boat, or your car, or anything else, so...
But it's not right up against your lawn, yeah?
No. The seven feet away from your fence.
Well, I'd say every house that I'd say is built out is taking up every foot of that front.
With structure.
With structure, I'm saying.
Correct.
To that seven foot, well, I shouldn't say all, but eighty percent of them are probably taking the full frontage as much as they can.
Would, would you say as a builder, if you could, if you could encroach into the setback with a little parking pad, that somebody could park a car there?
Well, where would that have to be?
I don't know, I'm asking.
Car?
I would, to me, it would be, to me, it'd be, you should be allowed, I should say four feet over and there'd be three feet left. Cause I'd say four feet's wide enough to walk on for a sidewalk.
Okay.
Cause we allow, right now, when we build, we allow to put window wells into that setback.
That's true.
And overhangs.
And overhangs. And we do allow walkways to front doors.
Yeah. Like you said, decks or patios. Patio, patio still would have to be, yeah, as long as they're a foot off, or, yeah, I think it's still gotta be seven foot back, I guess, than a poured patio would be.
We'll probably have to think about this one longer, too. I ask all the good questions, huh? Okay.
And the reasoning is if, like, if Rob's house is next to mine and he's got his camper in the driveway...
Yep.
I'm more than likely about to see it out of my house, but if it's right next to me, every time I walk by those windows, I think I would see it.
But I, if, I'm just not, not arguing you, but if there was, you know, if you only have seven feet, you're not gonna have enough to park there anyway without... Not a camper you want, because you'd probably have the overhang.
Not a camper.
A camper you'd want.
But if you could park a car there, how much...
Squeeze a car there, but I don't think, but then you'd have to be right on the edge of the property line, which we, I don't think should be allowed right to the property line.
At least a person can't ride home and back in town.
If you could get another car in the driveway, how much of those, how many would we take off the street? I think we'll, I think we'll just have to think about this and readdress it at our next meeting. If that, if that sounds all right for everybody.
We're actually pretty lenient in Sioux Falls, you're not allowed to park campers, RVs, and stuff like that.
In driveways? If you would like to put that as a discussion topic, we can do that, too.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, and it's...
Oh, I know.
It's based on complete basis, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Yeah. We, we certainly, I mean, absolutely, I, I get, in Sioux Falls, yes, they do have some other limitations as to what you can keep or have in your... We, we have not done that. I think we only require that, that vehicles, trailers, boats, whatever are licensed and operational, I believe. It's, it's some language like that.
So, just to be clear, Tim, you're wanting to discuss this because people are coming in droves to City Hall wanting to do this?
I wouldn't say droves, but I just, I've seen enough of it to at least wanna have a discussion about it.
And if they can't do it, you're saying they're coming before us to do a variance?
Yeah.
I haven't seen many of that.
We just had one for the pool.
Okay, one, but I mean, we're not seeing them come in every week.
N- no, but...
That's my point, until I see something like that multiplying, coming before us on a constant basis, I don't know if I wanna change it.
Okay. I wish Paul was here. I would like to ask Paul if, if, as a building inspector, how many people he has to tell no to? Because they can't meet the seven foot if they wanna add something. I guess it would be interesting to hear from him. Cause, you know, variances normally happen when somebody didn't pull a permit anyway, and then they did something they weren't supposed to do, and then they come in and ask for a variance.
You may still have that happen if we change this. People are always gonna push the limits.
People are always...
They're always gonna push it if we reduce it.
One hundred percent.
Three feet, they're gonna want two feet.
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I agree, one hundred percent.
We told them ten, they want nine.
Yep. I just asked the question because I didn't know why. I know that, oh, about a year ago, we had a gentleman who wanted one on his setback, cause he wanted to access his backyard with the drive lane. And we, and we denied that. Had a lady come in with a pool, right? And I was even thinking at the time with the guy with the drive lane, I get fire code, we wanna keep structures away from each other, but... I just asked the question. I know we followed the ordinance and that, but... Yes. This is what happens when I miss a meeting and get sick, I sit around and think a lot.
Maybe you shouldn't do that. So, there's the request, stop thinking when you're sick.
Chuck. Do you wanna think about it and have more discussion, or do you wanna have no more discussion?
I, I think, I agree with Chuck. This is a large demand for it, I don't see why we should change it right now.
Instead of a variance, could we allow it with a conditional use if somebody applied for one?
I think the same thing's gonna happen, you, like Brian said, we say ten foot with a condition, they're gonna come in and go, no, I want nine.
Okay.
And then how do you, how do you set the conditions on one and keep, how, how do you keep that consistent?
Right, I think that'd be hard.
Okay. One other question for Rob, so you're saying that you can't put a sidewalk beside a garage to access the side door if the structure's on the seven foot setback?
You can, from what I understand, what Paul says is you can do that to access a side door, but it couldn't just go to the backyard, like, to a fence, let's say. It'd have to go to a side door, how I understand it, how he's told me before.
Okay.
But I could misinterpret him, I'd have to ask him. So, you can't have a sidewalk that goes, so your house is seven feet off the property line. You can't have pavers or concrete sidewalk going in your side yard to the gate to get to your backyard. How he has explained it to me, you could not, cause it's concrete or it has to be seven foot. I wouldn't call that. Yeah, but that's how he's explained it to me. And maybe there's something in our ordinance that doesn't allow that, but to me, that should be allowable.
Yeah, I mean, I was...
I'd rather, I'd rather have somebody with pavers or a sidewalk going off their driveway, around their garage, to the gate to get to the backyard, than to see a walk path that's beat down and the only thing growing there is weeds, cause the kids are going back and forth all the time through that gate. What I've noticed on a lot of these ones that are right at seven foot each house, what they do is they just blend their landscaping together, a lot of them, instead of trying to maintain that, cause you got a window wall there and then you're right by them anyway, so they just blend their landscaping together and put pavers through there for each other to walk down, that's what I've seen. I don't, not everyone does that, but some do.
My husband wanted to put, I called them pavers, but now I understand there's a difference between pavers that you can drive on and patio bricks that are only this. All right, so I called Paul and said, my husband wants to put these, I call them pavers, up and down the side of the driveway. And I, he said, well, if it's just part of your landscaping, he thought I was talking about really pavers that you can drive on. They don't encroach on the, on the, um, setback. But like you said, if you wanted to put a, a sidewalk to the gate, I think if you just use these patio stones, or the kinds the kids make, where they take cement, put it in a pie pan, you could put them and it wouldn't make any difference. But if you wanna, like, pour cement or something.
Yeah, to me, to me, there's a difference between putting something out there to park a vehicle on or something that's for, for walking purposes, I mean. But I guess I'd have to look at our ordinance a little bit closer to, to understand where Paul's coming from and...
But I agree with you, if you said, oh, we get a, we could allow enough into the setback for a sidewalk to go back to the backyard, then somebody would say, well, that's just eight inches short of my motorcycle trailer, so if I could have a variance of, and people would push it, no matter what number we set, so...
I mean, people, I mean, people park their vehicles off, off paved areas, too, you know? So, I mean, if somebody wants to park their motorcycle trailer in the grass on the side of their garage, they're gonna do it, you know what I mean? Until somebody complains or...
Okay. No more discussion? We're good? I'll quit thinking, Chuck.
You're asked to make a motion.
To stop thinking? Just when I'm sick, or like, all the time?
Whenever you start thinking, Paul, whatever.
We may have to talk to your wife about this.
Okay. All right, well, take that one down. Um, then we have to review the building permits for May. Probably gonna be more of it.
It's gonna go up.
Yeah.
Correct.
Next month's building permits are probably gonna double. For all the damage.
Uh, very, yes, there, there was, their places were not good. Okay, anybody have anything else? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move second?
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven fifty-three.